Public schools to order. Please stand for the flag, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our general counsel, please call the role.
Director Miller.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Ushka.
Fully present.
Director Viall.
Uh, here.
And I understand Director Hines will be joining us shortly.
Uh, he's uh, we think so.
Okay.
If not, we'll excuse him at some point later. Uh, could I have a motion, please, for adoption?
I move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, uh, any opposed? Agenda is adopted. Recognition of staff, students, and community. Mr. Vopel.
Oh, great.
Thank you. Vice President Viall and members of the board. Your commitment to every student, every day, is playing out in our schools in a really powerful way. I didn't mean for that to rhyme, but it just did. And the rest of the world is really taking notice. The Tacoma Whole Child Initiative prepares our school staffs for the hard work of paying attention to and nurturing our students beyond the simple academics. Not only have school systems around the country turned to Tacoma for insights on this groundbreaking work, the successes of our pioneering schools have won a prestigious honor. And here to tell you about it is our leader of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, the Director of Student Life, Jennifer Cabista.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Mine is going to be short and sweet because I am going to be handing it off to the Representative of the Washington ASCD Board. But real quickly, if I could have everyone that's in the room that is either leadership or on the teams, leading this work in the buildings, could you please stand or our partners involved as well, please? And on that note, I'm going to ask Hannah to come up, and she'll start.
Thank you, Director Cabista. Good evening. My name is Hannah Benrow. As a member of the Washington State ASCD Board of Directors and Executive Committee, I'm here alongside with two fellow Washington State ASCD Board of Directors, um, members, to recognize the Washington State ASCD Safe Schools Award for 2015 with Cohort One schools from Tacoma Public Schools. Washington State ASCD Director Marissa Rathbone of OSPI is going to share information about this award and name the schools that are part of Cohort One. Then, Washington State ASCD Director Verhar, and I will continue with the recognition of Cohort One communities. This is particularly exciting for Marie Verhar and I, seeing as we have the privilege of serving as leaders both in Washington State ASCD and here in Tacoma Public Schools.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Again, my name is Marissa Rathbone. I'm the Program Supervisor for Health and Physical Education at OSPI and also a member of the ASCD Board. The Washington State ASCD Staff School Award, State Safe School Award, I'm sorry, is intended to recognize educators who contribute to providing a safe school where students learn in an environment that is physically and emotionally safe for students and adults. The Tacoma Whole Child recognition not only includes the Tacoma School District, but the following Cohort One schools. Bernie Elementary.
Representing Bernie, it's James Neal.
Good job.
Did your mommy come tonight, too?
Bo- Bose Elementary.
And we are going to have a couple of schools that are doing events tonight, so they're with their communities and families, so we are missing a few today. Bose is one of them.
Downing Elementary.
Again, fun evening with their families.
Edison Elementary.
Again, fun evening with their families.
Franklin Elementary. Larchmont Elementary. Lister Elementary. Mount Tahoma High School. Point Defiance Elementary.
And again, Point Defiance is having a fun evening.
Roosevelt Elementary. Skyline Elementary. Truman Middle School. And last but not least, Whitman Elementary.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Marie Verhar, Assistant Superintendent Teaching for Learning and proud member of Washington State ASCD Board. The Washington ASCD Board is recognizing Tacoma Public Schools tonight for their positive impact on student safety. As part of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, Tacoma educators are creating safe and secure schools through the implementation of social-emotional learning practices, restorative practices, and positive behavioral supports. Cohort One staff and students model, teach, and reinforce the three pillars of respect, responsible, and safe expectations. These pillars are taught, practiced, and reinforced daily throughout the school and in classrooms. Building whole children, as we know through social-emotional learning and action planning, is part of our district's and schools' benchmarks. This collaborative approach is developing a sustainable and safe school system for now and for the future. Washington State ASCD commends and honors these educators in our cohort schools as they lay a foundation where every student, every day, is engaged in learning in a physically and emotionally safe environment. Thank you.
And finally, before we wrap up, we just want to note that utilizing community resources is standard for Cohort One schools and making the most of partnerships with University of Washington Tacoma, Comprehensive Life Resources, City of Tacoma, Facebook, Olive Crest, Cascade Bicycle Club, Shared Hope, and Tacoma Pierce County Gang Coalition. On behalf of Washington State ASCD, we are honored to recognize the leadership of district administrators, school administrators, teachers, families, and students for these Cohort One schools. A key sentence from the award nomination form says it best. Many have heard the statement, "It takes a whole village to raise a child." But it also takes a whole child to build a sustainable and safe community. Thank you for helping us build these communities in Tacoma. On behalf of Washington State ASCD, we proudly recognize the Cohort One school communities for their visionary leadership and daily actions to support student safety. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to have all of you come up here so we can shake your hands and thank you for outstanding work. And Dr. Benner, we'd like to recognize you for your work.
Congratulations, Hannah. Congratulations so much.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you, Pearl. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
I just wrote your thank you note on my desk.
Thank you. Hello, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Where's Greg?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, we're going to come out there, too. Hey, I'll give you a hug when we get out there. I told Carla we need to recognize you. Oh, shit, we all get to.
Need his grunt job. He's another row. Ruffel. Catherine, Sarah, Catherine, Karen. Are you okay on the wall back? All right, up. Don't like to lie to each other.
Thanks, Greg.
Carla, do you have anybody to speak with?
No, you might want to invite anybody to. Oh, there's, is that what it's called? You do? No. All right, item, item three on our agenda, members of the public wishing to... Maybe wait a sec here. There we go. For people who don't know, the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative is a really important part of our education process for our kids in terms of their social and emotional learning. All right, moving on. Item three, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the board, please follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after the public comment has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the board, the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments. At the end of two minutes, you'll get a, there'll be a clock over on, by the secretary. You will get a little beep or a bell, knowing that you have three, a one minute left to complete your comments. Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have anyone wishing to speak this evening?
We have no speakers at this time.
Okay, moving on. Superintendent's report. Ms. Santorno.
Yes, we have two items tonight. I think both of them, you'll be real excited to hear. First of all, I've asked Steve Story, our Director of Maintenance and Operations, he is going to come and kind of tell us the state of the buildings. Come on up, Steve. They look good. Everyone I saw was spick and span. It was great.
Good evening, Vice President Viall and the Director Superintendent. Is this on? It is. I'm really, really happy to be here. I've been with the school district now four months, and I can tell you that the maintenance operations has seen a big change, just in its culture. And what I like to do, what I, what have we done? We've called this a summer of change because we've told the crews that change may be uncomfortable, but it feels good once we do it, right? So what we've done is we've, we've implemented some new communication opportunities. Setting up weekly, even daily, meetings and leadership team meetings with our leads and the different trades that promoted communication up and down the whole organization. On the maintenance side, also, we've, we've also provided opportunities for the leads and their teams to bring opportu, I mean, things that they're looking for to improve their jobs, and we've, we've really worked well with that. And so the, the communication up and down the line has been very good. We've also, with the operations side, on the custodial side, we've also implemented a way to look at our cost analysis of the supplies and equipment that we're using each school and figuring out how to maximize the dollars at our schools and making sure the dollars go to the schools to make the schools clean and safe and secure. We've also built partnerships. And this has been the, I think, one of the biggest, one of the paramount things that we've been able to do is with the trades, the union councils, and the custodial operations, we have, we have built a trust, an initial trust with those councils, where they are looking to us and communicating with us on a daily basis. And I believe that has built some great partnerships, even bridges with the two. And I'm really proud of that. One of the things we've done, we've hired a maintenance manager named Tom Chalk, who's, he's in the, he's lean. He has the experience with lean logistics and lean understanding. And so we started value streaming our processes. And it's amazing how we've been able to just take a plain, simple job of how a work order comes in and how it's completed and find the bottlenecks. And our team is actually asking questions. Why, why do we do that for? And that's been good. We've also built a new prioritization system where we actually are naming our priorities, and the team is coming in, they're calling it priority one, or they're calling it preventive maintenance. But it's a culture that we've changed. We've, we've moved, we've actually moved from being reactive to proactive. And it's shown, just this summer, how, when we opened up schools, how important it was. Not every school, fifty-seven schools, a lot of schools get to, but I think we've done very well with being proactive on some of the things. Uh, we drafted new vehicle operation directives, and that's proved positive. We had an incident where basically we lost a vehicle for a little while, and we found it. And, but because of, because of the new initiatives, it's all good. We got it.
You shouldn't say that out loud.
It's all good. It's all good. No, it's all good.
Steve has to have a little talk with you about that.
It's all, you know, it's all good. We found it. So what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, because of these initiatives, it's really good.
No, it was a front loader, remember?
Right, so, so we also, and so you can see that I'm pretty, I'm pretty proud of what we've been doing. We've also changed, we have new teams on our, on our night shifts now. We have two scheduled maintenance teams. We don't call them smart teams anymore. We're going to call them scheduled maintenance teams, and they're going to the schools and doing what they need to do. And those teams will stay put as a, as a team all the way through, through the summer, two-hundred-and-sixty days of the schools that we, that we have working days. Uh, we've developed some mission statements and some new KPIs. And here's a big one that we did. We did establish the Quality Work Life Committee. And we have fourteen members on that. Twelve, well, I'd say about ten of them are from the Custodial Department and, and the maintenance trades. We have two support staff, which would be our support staff from the operations side and from the maintenance side, and then two managers that are on this. We've had three meetings. We've already decided, you know, we've put together a mission statement. We're looking at value statements, and it's proven positive with that. And then, last but not least, is we were operational ready for fifty-seven schools, probably sixty sites. We got Ninth and Broadway building on, on, on the go, bringing in partnerships in there. I, I think that's, that's important. Um, if you think about it, we have, we have over five million square feet of buildings that we take care of, over seven-hundred-and-forty acres that we're responsible for. And if you think about the five million acre, five million square feet, that's basically equivalent, if you look at it, if you look at fifteen-hundred-square-foot home in, as an average, maybe in the city of Tacoma, that's thirty-three-hundred homes that we clean every day, and it's important. We opened up Hunt, McCarver Primary McKinley. Um, the Mount Tahoma, Tacoma, Mount Tahoma pool was, was painted this summer. We did some emergency repairs at Stadium Bowl, which proved positive. We got that done. And a, and a large one, I think, it was a smart board conversion, where we were able to take our own teams and install those boards across the district, saving dollars, and the install was quality work. So I, I believe the maintenance operation team, in the four months I've been here, has proved they're ready to do what they need to do. And I'm, and we're looking forward to this school year and what next summer will bring. So thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Steve. Great story.
Steve, before you leave, I just want to comment. Yesterday, I was, opportunity to stop by the six schools that are basically up in my neighborhood. And from the newer ones to the older ones, they just sparkled. And you can really see the, I saw that yesterday, and I just want to commend you on that, having our schools ready, curb appeal, the grounds were clean, everything. And I think that's what, when we talk about world-class school district, we need to look like one, and we did yesterday, so thank you.
One of the positive things we had was today at Roosevelt Elementary. We had a, we had a, an incident, we had a lady trip out front. And we got word of it first thing this morning, and we went out there and took a look at what it, what the issues were. And the principal out there, Ms. Foster, she was very surprised that we were there. And actually, we found some other things that we could do at Roosevelt. So we're looking, we're looking really, I mean, we're, we're looking forward to that, you know?
Awesome.
We already are, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the report. I don't think people realize the magnitude of, of what you and, and your people have to do every day. So can I add my house to that list? And the rest of us want to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, consent agenda.
Wait, I have a second, a second Superintendent's report. We had, I think it was last spring, where we had the DHH community come and talk about some of the issues that we're servicing. And I wanted John Bell to come back and circle around and kind of tell you what, uh, give you an update on how that service is working. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Superintendent Santorno. Good evening, Board members. I, I come bearing glad tidings and of great joy. The interpreters have a memorandum of understanding with the Pair Educators Union, or within the Pair Educators Union, that was based in large part on, on the concerns that were presented before the board back in March. In response to the shortage of staff that we've had, we have seventeen current interpreters on staff and certainly needs for probably eight to ten more in, in response to the increased costs of contracting ASL interpreters. This past year was in the neighborhood of eight-hundred-thousand dollars worth of contract costs. There are concerns about the quality that were expressed in that, in that meeting. And then there are concerns with the impending certification requirements for ASL interpreters and how that would impact our staff. So the, the privilege to announce was that a new salary structure has been established that allows us to better compete with our neighboring districts with deaf and hard-of-hearing programs. We have increased the hours for the basic services to being seven-hour-a-day employees, which permits increased collaborative time and preparation time for providing educational services. The new certification requirements are reflected in this salary structure and in this agreement, such that advanced certifications and, and expertise within the field will be rewarded with steps in the placement. We designated lead interpreter positions for buildings that have a number of interpreters on staff. That way, the daily types of changes that invariably come with sick leave or with those last-minute meetings that get scheduled can be responded to at the building level, and then permitting us to use our interpreter coordinator for evaluative purposes and the opportunity to respond to professional development needs within the ASL interpreter corps. And then the extra hour opportunities that really ran up the, the, the pay with our contracted costs are going to be made available to our staff interpreters. So all of these, in addition to the, the pay raise that's reflected in that salary structure, have put us in a position to better recruit. And the, the news has been, has traveled fast. My interpreters in the buildings have, have all reported, posting it on Facebook, and, and they're actively trying to get their colleagues from, from other places, whether that be school districts or in the other industries, public industries, to come and apply for these positions. So I'm anticipating a quick turnaround. The, the last piece of that, that, that is a success point, I spent some time at Mount Tahoma today, and was, was informed that in, in her twenty years of teaching, Debbie Tiger, the, one of the deaf ed teachers at Mount Tahoma, said today was the smoothest start she'd had with her deaf and hard-of-hearing students in, in all twenty years. That, that every single one of them had, had schedules that were perfectly set through the counseling department at Mount Tahoma, and that the interpreters that were there were all in place. And, and again, it was the smoothest start that she'd experienced. So she's, she's reporting positive things, and, and that positive feeling has been echoed through each of the other buildings at Baker and Bernie as well.
Thank you, John, for the work. I know that you've dedicated a lot of time to that. We really appreciate it. It's paying off. Thank you very much.
I just want to make one comment, because I see that we're hiring people on this agenda there, down there, interpreters, and so thank you very much for that hard work, and it's going to pay off. So it's great to see continuity in schools. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing what we requested you to do. I really appreciate that. I know it was hard work. Again, thank you. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda, motion to.
Uh, move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? For the purpose of transparency and clarity on consent agendas, it may look, there is a lot of information on there. The board has the opportunity to look at in advance and review and oftentimes ask questions prior to the meeting of the staff. So all those in favor of adoption of the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, quarterly financial update, none. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. You may find the monthly financial statements on the district website. Item number eight, curriculum and instruction, AA, Approval of I Grant's Plan, FP 2017 for Highly Capable Services, the 2015-16 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Equity and Academic Excellence, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the annual plan for highly capable services for the 2015-2016 school year.
Motion to adopt.
I move approval. Second.
Are there any comments or questions of the Deputy Superintendent?
No, I just want to make a comment. That was a really difficult thing to read. Pretty, you know, it's the form from the state, but it wasn't easy. I'm sure it wasn't easy to fill out either.
Hearing, no more questions or comments? All those in favor of adoption, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, and it's adopted. Item nine, business matters. Adoption of Resolution Number 1999, Authorization of Issuance and Sale of General Obligation Bonds in the Maximum Amount of $425 Million.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 1999, which authorizes the district to approve the sale of unlimited tax general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $425 Million.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments of the board? Mr. Miller.
So do we have any more bonds that will be coming out after this?
This will be the end of it for, until we ask our voters to approve additional bonds.
Right. What do you expect the interest rate to be as compared to previous?
Well, I don't know as compared to previous, but we're going somewhere around the mid-three, the four percent.
And that's part of your presentation later. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the resolution? Whoops, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just want to make a comment that I had an opportunity to sit with Rosalyn. And Rosalyn, just want to commend you for the thought and the work that you, and the planning that you put in for the bonds. You know, this, this, this item goes to action and is finished in a few minutes. And I think it's just really important to know that the amount of hours that goes into the preparation and the working with the financial advisor and the, the planning for the sale. Rosalyn and her team are going to New York to sell those bonds in person. So it's an incredible process. Thank you very much for the work you do.
I really appreciate that. And I would be remiss without mentioning that Patty Lewatt, our Director of Finance, and Marian Bigelow, our Accounting Manager, have been instrumental in bringing this to fruition, so.
You guys do a good job.
Yeah, thank you, you do. Uh, all those, any more questions or comments? I know we'll get further detail.
In the report at the end.
In the report. All those in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution is adopted. Item nine B, Approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to Skanska Agreement for the Stewart Middle School Modernization Edition. Mr. Morikami, I believe.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the negotiated guaranteed maximum price of $44,251,000 and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Skanska USA Building, Inc. agreement for the modernization edition of Stewart Middle School.
Move approval. Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve item nine B. Any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing, none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. Be oh. Nine C, Approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to Skanska Agreement, Skansas, I'm sorry, Agreement for the McCarver Elementary School Modernization. Again, Mr. Morikami.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the negotiated guaranteed maximum price of $25,746,000 and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Skanska USA Building, Inc. agreement for the modernization of McCarver Elementary School.
I move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the item nine. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the item nine, nine C. Is there any questions or comments by the board of Mr. Morikami? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted, three oh. Adoption, I'm, I'm sorry, four oh. Getting wrong. I have to go back and learn to count. Adopt, item nine D, adoption of resolution number two thousand, acceptance of commissioning report for a new Washington Elementary School.
The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors adopt resolution number two thousand, accepting the commissioning report for the construction of the new Washington Elementary School.
Move adoption, second.
And moved and seconded. Mr. Morikami, could you just briefly explain what that means that we're doing?
Sure. So, commissioning is, it's making sure that what we designed in terms of mechanical and electrical systems in the building are actually operating the way they're supposed to. And so, it's a third party that comes in and conducts testing after construction is done. It's not affiliated with the mechanical or electrical engineers of record. It's a true third party review to make sure that the building's working the way we designed it.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments of the board? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted, four oh. Item ten E, adoption of resolution two thousand and one, declaring an emergency related to Sheridan Elementary Roof Repair, Mr. Morikami.
The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors adopt the attached resolution number two thousand one, declaring an emergency related to the Sheridan Elementary Roof Repair.
Move approval, second.
And moved and seconded. Could you just briefly explain what that's going to do or what happened?
By declaring an emergency as part of our new policy sixty-two-ten that allows us to activate a contract directly with a contractor without going through the bidding process if the building is in a state of emergency. And what we found in this new proactive preventative maintenance review of our sites, our maintenance team found a leak in the covered play shed at Sheridan. And so, they immediately coordinated it off. We pulled down a section of the soffit inside the covered play to look at where the water was coming from and if there was damage. We found some, some water damage on a few of the roof joists and one of the supporting beams. So, we immediately got a structural engineer out there to verify a, a fix and a recommendation of how to move forward. We feel that there is an immediacy to it and that there could potentially be, if we had a seismic event, that the building would be at risk. And so, we coordinated it off. We'd like to, to get a contractor out there immediately. We had a contractor that did the repair work at Manitow Park Elementary that did the front entry repair, so they're highly experienced in this kind of repair work where they get in and they immediately brace and secure and then replace.
Thank you. Any other, any comments or questions?
I just have one question. Was that play structure put up at the time the school was constructed or was that later addition?
It's part of the original nineteen ninety-six construction.
I, I just have a quick question. I know those front entries were all related to buildings that were built within that same timeframe. Have we had any other issues with the similar play sheds that were built at that time?
No, not yet. So, what we've done, what we've, what we've found, what we've found is we've had, we've had building failures oddly enough consecutively from Sheridan when the front entry failed in, and that was built in ninety-five. We had a failure at Manitow Park and we had a failure at Northeast Tacoma, and they were all built ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven.
That's why I'm asking.
And so, we've gone through each summer and looked at those buildings built in that era with those types of building systems to look and see, and so, that's one of the reasons why we found Sheridan this summer or just in the last week and a half.
Yeah. Edison and Torre the same plan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Where does the funding come from?
We're going to basically use a small capital funding source to do this, and the reason why we're going at it in that venue is we're going to do an improvement project. We're not going to just repair it. We're going to redesign the way the roof drains. Right now, there's some shallow cricketing that diverts water to a scupper and we're going to look at bolstering that and getting a better positive flow for the water to leave the roof.
So, the small caps funding came from the bond?
It did. It's part of the two thousand thirteen bond.
Great.
And so, we have a balance of funds that were unassigned for this type of contingency repair.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good question. All those, any more questions or comments? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing, no opposition. Motion passes forward. Other business, none. Report to the board, bond update.
They hear bonds and they run away. I'm telling you. So unfortunate.
No, they probably find it's boring going through.
Anyone else want to go? Really hard. Okay, so, I would like to welcome Fred Eoff. He is our financial advisor. He works for PFM Advising, and he's been our financial advisor for a number of years now, and he worked with us on our last bond issuance a year ago. And you all know Patty Luat, our director of finance. So, I'm going to talk to you real quick about our district bond strategy. If we look back to two thousand twelve through two thousand fifteen, we had a different outlook on how we were going to go about doing the bonds. We had our bond approval in two thousand and twelve, and the environment and the market and the financial aspect of the world was a very different place back then. We had a strategy that we didn't want to make our tax rates go through the roof. We wanted to try and level our tax rates out, and we actually used that as a talking point during our bond election. And with that, we tried to maintain a level tax rate with our future issuances of bonds. So, as we were issuing bonds, we said we were going to use bond anticipation notes. We would take out just enough money from the bonds in order to provide for cash flow for the building projects, and then we would wait and see what the bond or the tax rates looked like the next year before we would issue tax, before we issue bonds again in order to maintain a tax rate that was level and the taxpayers wouldn't see a huge increase in their tax rates. That was all in the assumption that we would have low or no assessed value. Currently, we are seeing our market change, and with that changing environment, we need to adapt our strategies to adjust for that. And so, what we've looked at are what our scenario options are, how we can go about going through and getting the entire, the rest of the bonds issued and get the rest of the money for it so that we can fund all of our projects moving forward, have enough cash flow, and still keep the tax rates within an appropriate level so that our homeowners don't see tax rates going through the roof. And we've been able to do that through the fact that assessed value is now going up. So, as our assessed value is going up, we're going to lower our tax rates down. We can keep the cost to the taxpayer at a level amount, and then we can also still get the entire four hundred and twenty-five, actually it's three hundred and twenty million dollars of regular bonds plus a hundred and ten million dollars of refinanced bonds issued within those parameters. Did I skip any items on there? Take advantage of low tax rates, yeah. So, as, as part of the environment as well, our, sorry, not tax rates, our, losing it today.
I think you're talking about interest rates.
Interest rates. Good grief. It's time to go.
I know.
It's all over now. The interest rate environment is really incredibly low, and so, you know, it's been a very variable market in the last few weeks. We've seen some incredible things going on with the stock market, and who knows what's going to happen with China? Who knows what will happen with the continuation of, of the stock market's variability? And so, it's, it's a good time for us to start looking at what to do in capitalizing on the interest rates that we're seeing now so that we can make sure that we're saving the district money in the long term. So, if we look at the bond sale schedule, August through September, we've been doing a lot of work with our underwriters and our financial advisors to develop the preliminary official statement, which is what we send out to our investors to give them an idea of whether or not they want to invest in our product or not, and working on what the issuance structure should look like. We've worked very closely with Fred Eoff as well as our underwriters to determine what the structure of the bonds would look like, whether we're going to have enough money to pay those bonds off in the long term, and what the interest rates look like and where we have the ability to be flexible or not. On September tenth, that's today, you've approved the resolution as well as this board report that we're giving you today. On Monday, we're going to be meeting with the rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's, and Patty will talk a little bit about that in the next slide. And on the twenty-third, we expect our ratings to be confirmed so that we can release a POS or the preliminary official statement on October eighth, and on October twenty-first, we'll be in New York to do the bond sale with an expectation of our closing documents being finalized on November fifth.
So, speaking a little bit about the refinancing of the two thousand five A series bonds, we're looking, and I believe this is possibly a question that, that.
Please turn on your mic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here we go. So, we're looking at a savings about, of about eleven point two million. So, it is a substantial savings when you think about the hundred and five million that we are doing through this refunding. So, we're really, I was really happy to see that, and it's about a net present value of a nine point nine percent of par. Then we're also, as Rosalyn.
What does that mean?
Yeah, you explain that to the non-economists here.
We, it, it's kind of a metric that the industry has developed over years to, to relate the present value of the savings to the principal amount of the bonds that, that are being refunded. Many people look at a, at a net present value savings percentage of refunded principal at a four percent level or above as a point at which at times you ought to be very comfortable proceeding with the refunding. We, as you may have noted in the, in the, in the resolution, put a, a, a threshold of five percent because we're pretty confident we could hit it. If the market stays with us, which we pretty much expected to, we're, we're going to be achieving about a nine point nine percent of our savings here, which is easily twice what, what most issues would consider to be a very positive funding. Another comment on, just a quick comment on this refunding. We, we've tracked this refunding for close to two years now, and we could have refunded it at any time for less savings, although at many points in time, those savings would have been above a traditional level that most people would have been happy with, but our sense was as long as the interest rate environment was not running away from us, that we were, we, we'd gain with every passing month because with every month, we, we eliminated some of the negative reinvestment loss that we have and we would add in the escrow due to the extremely low reinvestment environment we're in today. So, so, we're now at a point where the O-five A bonds are up against their optional redemption date on, on December first, and we feel like we've really won this, won this battle by, by tracking and deferring. That's why we're getting the savings that we're getting here.
Thank you.
It's a very positive funding.
The, the two thousand five A series bonds were a ten-year callable bond series, and so, we've expired that ten-year period. If we had gone out to refinance them before the ten years had expired, we would have had to, I would call it a penalty essentially. That's probably not the proper financial term for it, but I, from a layman's perspective, that's how I think of it as. Now that we've waited that ten-year period, we've been able to capitalize on the full, the, the full ability to refund it at, at the highest interest rates possible or the highest, the, the terrible.
Highest rate of return. Would it be correct to say we're getting the highest rate of return now by refinancing, by waiting that we could have on our, our bond issue from two thousand five?
I think it's fair to say that by waiting, we have achieved pretty much the optimal economic value available for funding these bonds.
Awesome. Thank you.
And as we've discussed, that we're going to issue the remaining three hundred and twenty million in construction authorization and that these maturities will be from two thousand and sixteen to twenty thousand thirty-nine, and so, that's the ra, the range that we're looking at as far as what the, the bonds will be, the years that they will be sold to. Also, what we're doing is we're structuring our debt to fit within our overall debt goals and provide capacity for future bond issuances, and Fred will talk about that a little bit further on.
I just have a quick question. On the maturities from two thousand sixteen to thirty-nine, does that, is that the bond anticipation note?
The bond anticipation note?
Well, we issued bond anticipation notes. We actually have to fund those, do we not?
We refinanced those.
Oh, you did. Okay. I wasn't clear on that too. I'm looking at that and I was wondering where, where they went, so.
You may, you may recall that we had, we, we presented to the board the original strategy. We felt like we probably were going to be looking at a series of bond anticipation notes.
Right, and I know we didn't, we're not now going to have to do that.
And we did not have to do that.
Okay, great.
We did that one year. We refunded that note the next year. Our tax base has, has improved significantly and given us the ability to move it to long-term permanent debt.
I just wanted to make sure they weren't floating out there somewhere. Thank you.
So, as Rosalyn had mentioned, we're, we're going to be presenting to Moody's and Standard and Poor's, and we're, we're currently with Moody's at a double A two and Standard and Poor's at a double A minus. So, for the benefit of what does that mean? That's sort of our credit rating and how they, how, how investors will look at us in terms of wanting to invest in our bonds. The district as a practice typically uses the state school bond guarantee program, and you sort of put that in place in case something happens with your bond ratings, and that would enhance our ratings from what we currently have to a double A one and a double A plus. So, again, tonight, we, we, the board took action on the resolution, which authorizes the issuance of the bonds, gives us the parameters that will be inside of that preliminary official statement, and also delegates the execution authority to the superintendent and chief financial officer.
If you look at the, the couple of, there's a chart in the graph here. The graph basically reflects the numbers you see on the chart. But if you go back to two thousand and eight, you can see the district through two thousand and nine was still on a positive trend with your tax base. And then, of course, we know what happened to us beginning in, in oh nine, and the assessors started to revalue property. Our tax base in terms of A B began to erode in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, accelerated in twenty-twelve, and again in twenty-thirteen, and it was long about that twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen time that we were trying to develop the financial plan in terms of what do we do about the, about the, the proposed new debt? And that's where the, the note strategy was developed. And then, in, in twenty-fourteen, we saw a slight rebound of the tax base, and that was enough for rebound to allow us to move away from the note strategy, at least for one year. Last year, we had another very positive, almost an eight percent recovery again in the, in the, in the tax base, which is, which put us at a point where it would have, it would allow us irrespective of what happens in twenty-sixteen, which I'll touch on in a minute, put us in a position where we had enough of a positive growth in the tax base to consider issuing all of the remaining unsold original authorization and take advantage of, of interest rates which still remained at, at, at near historic levels. And, and after many discussions and iterations of ideas, that was the conclusion that we came to, that, that, that was the optimal, the, we felt that was the optimal thing to do. And looking forward to twenty-sixteen, we don't know what twenty-sixteen, for tax year twenty-sixteen, although looking at various market indicators and the, we, I, my personal prediction is we're, we're probably going to see something like another seven percent improvement in the tax base for twenty-sixteen tax purposes. So, what we have here is a, 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 a chart that kind of equates all this until, to what does it all mean to the taxpayer out there? And really, the left side of the chart is the, is the, the breakdown over time of the M and O levy, the capital levy, and the debt service levy, the total aggregate levy in the column down the middle of the chart. We, we've expressed that in terms of, of a, of a home. Those numbers, by the way, are, we pull those from Zillow, actually. That's, that's for a twenty-sixteen, two oh five is the median, medium, median in the single family home in, in Dakota City, Tacoma. So, that's where we use that and equate that in terms of what's the. So that's where we use that. And equate that in terms of, what's the, what's the tax bill to that home for, for the schools? Combined M and O, capital and debt service levy in, in dollar amounts. That's what we're showing here. We're, we expect the actual homeowner value in, in twenty-sixteen for the median, median home to be about fifteen hundred, a very slight increase in twenty-seventeen. A drop in twenty-eighteen, which, yes, why does it drop? Well, if you look over to the very left, you'll see there is a drop in twenty-eighteen in the M and O levy. I, I can attest from personal observation that the staff here and the CFO in particular spends untold hours trying to predict what's, what's your, your future, your future M and O levy. And, and in light of what the legislature is doing or not doing or trying to do, I, I honestly think that exercise is like stuffing air into a bottle. So, so exactly what transpires in twenty-eighteen in terms of what the funding from the state is for M and O is frankly anybody's guess. So we're, so that, that, that drop that you see here in twenty-eighteen is, is, it's just a numerical best we can do at the point, point in time. But the point here being that the, the taxpayer increases over this time period are, you know, fairly modest on a, on a year-to-year basis.
I would actually interject on that. That the reduction in the M and O in the twenty-eighteen year is consistent with the state law bringing the levy authorization down by four percent. So it's just, it's a limitation that's already set in law and so we're trying to adhere to what that looks like in our projections.
Any questions about this chart?
Questions or comments?
So what we, this is kind of a graphic indication of where we, where we, we plan to be after we price and, and issue the, not only the refunding. This reflects the effect of the refunding, which, which impacts the debt service in the, in the very front end through twenty-twenty. The savings associated with the refunding is gonna spread over the years, twenty-sixteen through twenty-twenty, partly, you know, in, in a little bit of an art form, allowing us to optimize the, to bridge across that period with the, with the additional three hundred and twenty of new money to get us where we wanna be. And then, and then from twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one out through twenty-thirty-nine, we fill in some existing step downs in terms of debt service to give us an overall level debt structure out through twenty-thirty-nine. The logic of twenty-thirty-nine is the final maturity is these bonds were voted with a, with a not to exceed maximum term of twenty-five years by the voters. We're issuing a little earlier than December one of twenty-fifteen. So we can't like go to twenty-five years. It would put us slightly beyond that twenty-five-year point. So twenty-thirty-nine is about twenty-four years and a few months to keep us legal. Oh, the other, the other point that is, that I think is worth noting here is the other logic that was involved in this is there's a fairly significant step down in debt service here between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. I don't think the district knows exactly what your plans might be in terms of next potential debt request. But if the cycle holds somewhat consistent with the past, you may be at the twenty-twenty point asking voters for the next authorization. This structure allows you to bring that new debt in beyond twenty-twenty. We've got a lot of, a lot of step down in terms of capacity to fit new debt service in there after twenty-twenty without exceeding the debt service burden that your taxpayers would be, already be paying at that point.
Questions, comments?
Hey, as a Tacoma City taxpayer, thank you.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, me too. Thank you. I really like the work that's been done on the debt structure, giving us the ceiling and the flexibility to continue with our modernization of our schools if our taxpayers choose to do that in a twenty or twenty, year twenty-twenty-one. Great, great presentation. Thank you.
The, is this our last slide? Yeah. Just a summation of the team here. Obviously, I'm with Public Financial Management and it's been my privilege to represent the district for several years now. Our bond counsel is K and L Gates. Our underwriting team consists of RBC Capital Markets. Christine Peel is with RBC Capital Markets is in the audience with us tonight. Our other co-managing underwriter is Piper Jaffray Company. We had a third underwriter in the last financing, as you may recall. Based on that financing, we took a hard look at the performance of the underwriting team and concluded that, that the, the third underwriter, the contribution was, was, was not up to par with the other two. So we didn't need to keep them in the account. We've got two very strong, well-capitalized underwriters on board here now and I expect we'll do fine. The only last comment I'll make about, about the underwriters and just, is kind of how we work with them. We've, we've looked at, at a number of different scenarios to get us where we want to be. So we always ask Christine and her patriots, do this what-if for us. Let's see what it looks like. And the question sometimes is, you wanna see that? Yeah. So, so they have a very good analytical team. They're very smart people. They've yet to fail to come back with the alternatives on a very timely basis. We have our own internal analytical group. So we look at their results and we run what I like to call parallel, parallel confirmation. Their goal is to, is to come back to me and hopefully say, we sync up perfectly with RBC. That makes my day. So we're always running kind of a parallel path of this because there's a lot of dollars at stake here. We wanna make sure we don't, we don't miss something along the way. And it, it's so far worked, proven to be a, a good working team and I think the district will be well-served.
Thank you very much. I personally know how much work is involved in that, having done this at the state level a number of years ago. And it is a lot of hours and a lot of hard work and maintaining our credibility and our ratings and done awesome job. Thank you.
We, the resolution that you adopted specified a not to exceed interest rate on this financing of the new money portion at five and a half percent. Frankly, we don't expect to be anywhere near that. I think that we're, the market doesn't run away from us here in the next two or three, four weeks. We expect to be around three and a half percent.
Thanks so much. Great. Thank you so much. Board comments or reports? Director Miller, I'll start with you.
Hey, first day at school? No texts, no phone calls? Good with me.
Good deal. Director Wensky?
I don't have a report today.
Director Ishka?
Just best luck to everybody on a great fifteen, sixteen. We've got the best minds at work to, for every student every day, doing the right thing 'cause it's the right thing to do. Excited about that. The other thing is, is that tomorrow was nine eleven and I, I remember watching that. A lot of people here do. But most of the kids that are in K through five right now have no idea what we're talking about unless we teach them. If there are no objections from my peers, I would like if we could just take a brief moment of silence for our first responders that lost their lives there and in the wildfires this summer. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief comments. Director Hines and I, over the last couple of weeks, had the opportunity to sit down with Congressman Heck and Congressman, am I forgetting your name?
Kilmer.
Kilmer. I'm kidding. I'm like Rosalyn. I'm spacing out Congressman Kilmer and discuss the education issues and the two bills that are before, in conference now with the House and Senate. We didn't get a real rosy outlook because it's an election year, because there's some major issues in, in the queue in front of us. But knowing Senator Murray and her negotiating skills, they said she may be the one that will be able to pull it out. We did reiterate the issue of, of no waivers, having to go through that process, of state having more authority over the standardized test and what that means and all of the issues that we've talked about. So I guess we're just gonna sit and wait and see what Congress does between now and January. They felt that in the issue, remember a year ago, we had the sequestration and it cost us a significant amount of dollars. I believe it was about five million if I remember correctly. And they said they felt that given the fact that we're going into an election year that we probably for the next year and a half will see continuing resolutions, which just simply means just continue to do what we're doing. And we did make the point on the bill, Senator Murray and Senator, the, the bill coming out of the Senate had, Senator Alexander's bill has preschool as a part of the K-12, now the P-12 system. The House bill does not and we reiterated that as far as we're concerned, our preschool is now the new kindergarten and is an integral part of education. And Congressman Kilmer is on the appropriations committee and he was gonna make sure that got carried forward. So anyway, they are back in Washington doing good work for us and we will just keep our fingers crossed and see what happens. Okay, announcement of future board meetings. There, we will have a study session on Thursday, September seventeenth at five o'clock in the fourth floor. Or six, I'm sorry. Bad glasses. Six o'clock, thank you. Fourth floor auditorium, we'll be looking at Arlington Elementary School Design Review. Regular meeting on the, on September twenty-fourth at six and regular meeting on Thursday, October eighth at six o'clock. I would like to move to excuse Director Hines.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say probably saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, he's excused for a vote. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And moved in second at all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.